This is the clock on January 24, 2023. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to note for the record, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Good to know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Joe Fisher, and Board Member Elizabeth Klein. Second item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please turn and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we proceed to the next agenda item this evening, I do want to read a statement from the Board. Sunday marked the Lunar New Year, a time that should be a joyous celebration in our community. This is a time when all members of our community should feel safe, secure, and welcome. Yet our nation has just experienced 39 mass shootings so far in 2023, including the ones Saturday in Monterey Park and Monday in Half Moon Bay, California. The events in Monterey Park, home to one of the largest AAPI communities in the U.S., can cause fear, anxiety, and a range of other emotions. We stand with our AAPI community in condemning the violence and rejecting any identity-based animosity or harassment toward individuals in and around our community. In Half Moon Bay, where children were present at the scene of the mass shooting, we are reminded of our communal responsibility to safeguard our town against violence and intolerance. We have said it before, and we will continue to say, that hate has no home in Hingham. Hate will not divide us, and it will not conquer us, and violence will not be tolerated. I'm going to ask if that be posted on our website, Tom?
It has been posted.
Has it supported by the entire Board? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets of minutes this evening. Oh, we have one set of minutes, January 18. Joe, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Liz, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
With that, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the minute dated January 18, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of two special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for the 2023 Dead of Winter Art Series to be held at Ames Chapel on February 2, 2023, and March 4, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I believe we have John Davenport with us. John, come on up. If you could just go to the podium there, John, and state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your application.
Oh, Dean, sorry about the phone. My name is John Davenport, 63 Burditt Avenue. I'm the president of the Hingham Cemetery and the Friends of Hingham Cemetery. I apologize for missing last meeting. Couldn't get myself wired in, but here I am.
Great. So can you tell us about what the application involves and what about the art series?
This is the, we've, the last few years, I think 2019, 2020 was the first year we did it. We've had a series of events called the Dead of Winter. They're always in the Dead of Winter events, some musical events, mostly musical events. And then we've also had readings, and these two, we've had, this is the second and third of this year's series. And the first, they're both readings by fairly well-known authors. And I think the first one's on a Thursday, and the other one is on a Saturday, I believe. And we've had these before, and they've been reasonably successful, quite successful, and that's about it. When we had the first one, we, police and fire reviewed it very carefully, raised some issues which I think we answered satisfactorily, and nothing has really changed. We've never had any trouble. There's not, it's beer and wine only, and it's for short periods of time before the performance, and then sometimes, not always, afterwards for a while. That's it. I don't have any more, any questions I'd be happy to answer.
I know these series are pretty popular, John. How many people do you anticipate at the event?
The most, I think the last one, which was 90, or close to it, we sold 90 tickets. I think 85 people showed up. These readings don't draw us quite as many people. I think it's the, we've, it's about 50 so far for the first one. I don't, for the second one, I don't have a number yet, but it would be in that range. And the Thursday one is less likely to be heavily attended.
Great. Joe, any questions?
How is parking handled?
Parking has never been a problem. I mean, the police did, police and fire did raise that. There's, it's not that far from South Street. We have our own parking for not too many cars, and most people come, most of them are couples, so 40 people is going to be 20 cars, and we've just not had a problem.
And I just noticed, and I'm assuming, I don't know if it was intentional, not the macabre humor cemetery hosting Dead in Winter.
Oh, I know. I know. We didn't think of that, but I hadn't thought of it until just now.
But no other questions?
Okay. Liz, any questions?
I've reviewed the application, and I know there have not been issues in the past, so no questions.
Okay.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of two special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for the 2023 Dead of Winter Art Series to be held at Ames Chapel on February 2, 2023, and March 4, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries.
Thank you.
John, best of luck with your events.
Thank you.
Thanks for your advocacy for the cemetery.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a potential vote to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Firefighters Association, IAAF, Local 2398. I believe we have Chief Murphy online. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing great. Do you want to walk us through where we are with the CBA?
Yeah, so I actually didn't realize that this hadn't gotten completed yet. We, as you know, we signed a MOA with the Firefighters Union in, I believe it was November of 2021, I believe, and then it took some time to kind of change that from the MOA into the contract. And the union itself signed the contract back in July, but I believe HR and Kevin Feely wanted to review it to make sure that the language of the contract matched up with what the MOA agreed for and everything else. And that's where we are. Lisa just mentioned that Kevin Feely had recently approved it and said that he believes the MOA and the contract align.
Great. And Chief, it appears to me that the Firefighters Association is pretty happy with the CBA. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Excellent. Great. Well, certainly, I know the Fall has been very busy for the Hingham Fire Department, very much appreciate what you do, what all the firefighters have been doing for us, so thank you very much. Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, it's my understanding that nothing's changed since the last time we reviewed it, and that Kevin Feely has reviewed everything, so I'm comfortable with it.
Joe?
No questions. We signed off on the MOA, so this is the next step. And thank you for all your work.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move and make a motion that the Town sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Permanent Firefighters Association, IAAF, Local 2398, effective July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Have a great night.
Thank you, Chief.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, item six was previously listed as a potential reserve fund transfer for the school department. That item has been withdrawn and will be heard next Tuesday night. So that brings us to Agenda Item 7, which is the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. And the first article up tonight is Article I, the Building Department Revolving Fund. We have Mike Clancy with us this evening. Mike, good evening. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Good to see you. Good. You could just, I know we talked about all of these articles last week, but if you could just, you know, give us any more additional detail you think might be helpful to us in making decisions tonight, that'd be great.
Sure, if you don't mind, I could read a little.
Of course, yeah. Of course.
Good evening, everybody. The Building Department's revolving account budget, all plumbing, gas, electrical inspectors are paid out of this budget. There are two full-time inspectors and four part-time inspectors. Also along with that, 50% of the building commissioners' pay comes out of that, along with 50% of two administrative assistants. Expenses are quarterly health reimbursement, mileage, vehicle fuel and maintenance, uniforms, wireless Verizon for the iPads, dues, committees, meetings, plumbing, gas, and electrical codebooks, office supplies. One thing I did want to bring up that I think I talked about before, adjusting the fees. The last time the plumbing and gas fees were adjusted were back in January 2012. The electrical fees were adjusted back in 2010. We surveyed 11 surrounding towns. Eight of those towns have adjusted their fees in the last four years. We are in the process of creating a report to show how the adjusted fees will compare with the surrounding towns, and the need to adjust the fees is to cover the cost of doing business and going forward with the revolving account. With the Select Board and Advisory Committee's approval, we will ask Town Meeting to adjust the fees. And I'll take whatever questions or concerns the Select may have.
So just initially, Mike, so the fees that we're looking at potentially increasing would be plumbing and gas permit only?
Plumbing, gas, and electrical permits. We also have a separate one for building.
Got it.
And just to be clear, just to clarify, that will come as a separate article?
Yeah, that's not part of what we're considering this evening.
Yeah, so the one tonight.
Just revolve.
Just revolve, okay.
Just to revolve.
Got it.
Plumbing, electrical, and gas.
Okay. Yeah, no changes from last week. Joe, do you have any questions?
No, because this is just a transfer involving the revolving fund. We're not discussing any changes in fees with respect to this article. I've got no questions.
Liz, any questions?
But given that we haven't changed the fees yet, this $350,000 covers all of the things that you talked about?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this proposed warrant article? Seeing none, are you comfortable voting?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Okay. Then what we'll do, since we're going to vote tonight, we'll take a vote on each specific article. So with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article I.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Thanks a lot. All right, next item on the agenda is Article J, which is the Elder Services Revolving Fund. Jennifer, good to see you. Come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Good to see you. If you could tell us a little bit about this potential article?
Yeah, so the recreation revolving account that we're referring to is the account that we use at the senior center to place all of the revenue that we generate for program fees, and all of the expenditures go out to pay for the instructors or other services rendered for those same programs.
Great. Any questions, Liz?
So does the $80,000 cover all of the fees collected for the year?
It does. So back in 2019, the expenditure cap was raised. I believe it was around $50,000 a year. The goal is to get back to that. So right now, we are revolving around $50,000 a year, so the 80 will cover us for the time being.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions on this proposed warrant article? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article J.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Jennifer, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Great evening. Great. Our next item on the agenda is Article O, which is Acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N. I believe we have with us, to help us, is Article, Michelle, Erin, and Keith.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great.
Good. So we are proposing adopting Article, or yeah, General Law 59, Section 5C and 1/2, which effectively would double, or could potentially double, all of our exemptions. So I know last year, or last week, you.
Excuse me. I think that's not the article we're discussing.
We're doing the first one first.
59, so it's 5N.
Oh, that's Keith.
Yep.
Keith told me to go.
Well, she's listed as a.
She is, but she's.
Erin, you are listed as one of the presenters. That's why.
I figured I went last time, so you could.
Oh.
But we'll turn to Keith. All right, go ahead, Keith.
So, oh, let me get to. So we're hoping to have this go on as a warrant article. What this is, is something that we already have in place. It's a legislation that was passed several years ago. It's called the Valor Act. It's then been revised with an act under the Baker administration called the Brave Act. It's a local option that was adopted at Town Meeting, like I said, a few years ago, that allows 10 qualified veterans of this community to provide services to my department, and they're paid at the minimum wage rate for a maximum exemption of $1,500 each fiscal year. To date, a maximum of six veterans have ever, the most I've ever had is six, the least I've ever had is four, simple math tells me that's five. 50% has been the fill rate over the last 10 years, so there's a 10-year average that we fill 50% of the seats. The current mass minimum wage is $15 an hour. This law would allow us to have a veteran work instead of another veteran who is disabled, who can no, who could no longer perform those tasks or operations needed. The minimum wage would still be in place, but the hours would increase. So the hours would go to 125 hours if adopted, which would allow a maximum exemption of this year, using this minimum wage calculations, as $1,875, a $375 increase over the current law. And again, that would be for someone who is severely disabled and would not be able to perform the work themselves.
And this is all to achieve a payment in lieu of real estate taxes?
Correct. Those hours that are worked, even though we use the minimum wage, even though the Town clarifies them as an employee for sake of workman's comp, et cetera, if things were to happen, there is no money that ever exchanges hands. It's in the form of an exemption. So one person, a veteran, would be working for another person. For instance, I, as a veteran, could work for Bill if he was incapacitated, and Bill's family would get that money off their taxes if I served 125 hours, the maximum.
Excellent. Liz, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for explaining this last week.
Great. Any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article O.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith. That brings us to Article W, which is Acceptance of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C and 1/2. So I think that's the one you're going to be.
That's me.
Awesome.
So, as I was explaining before, effectively, what we would do is potentially double all of our existing statutory exemptions. So not, I know last week you spoke about the veterans, but it would also double our senior exemptions. So we have a 17E, we have, as well as our blind exemptions, 41D, which is over the age of 65, as well as all the existing veterans' exemptions. So for fiscal '22, our total amount was approximately $75,000, so we would estimate a doubling of about $150,000 for this coming year. And we feel that this would really benefit both the seniors as well as the veterans in terms of the assessments going up and the override on the table, so we think that this is probably a great time to put this forward.
I'm going to recede myself from the discussion of bonus articles. I'll, Joe, I'll let you lead the discussion on it.
So you, in fact, covered this very eloquently at our prior meeting. I've got no questions. I think this is the right thing for the Town to do, and it's the right time for us to do it.
Okay. Great.
Liz?
I agree. I definitely want to move forward with the exemptions, just so, just to confirm, that $150,000 would come from the overlay account?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any member of the public have comments or questions on this article?
I'd just like to add one other thing about the overlay, which we're just going to kind of glaze over. Some of those articles for veterans, I can only speak to the veterans' articles, are reimbursed by the state in full, and some of those are partial repayments, which typically the state pays a year in the, up to a year in the rears. So actually, some of that money, that $150,000 that Erin mentioned, we discussed earlier, is, would be the extreme maximum, but it's probably going to be way lower than that if you add in those reimbursements.
Do we, is there a process we need to go through to request that reimbursement, or is it automatic?
It's done in a system and gateway. Basically, we put in the number of exemptions we've received, and then they calculate what we get back.
Great.
Any other member of the public? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article W.
Second. Local vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye. And note for the record that Bill Ramsey has abstained.
Erin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keith, before you go, do you want to mention the event tomorrow night briefly?
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, I have, going to be away for military service tomorrow.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Tomorrow is Hingham High School Veterans Appreciation Night for the wrestling team at about 6:45 p.m. The Hingham Police Department will grace us with their color guard. Members of the Hingham High School Chorus will sing the National Anthem, and then we will recognize members of the Military Reserve, retirees, Blue Star and Gold Star families. For those of you who may not have known, a Gold Star family in Hingham, which is Sergeant Matthew Patika, United States Marine Corps, is an alumni of Hingham High School. He was also an alumni of the wrestling team, and his father is actually the scorekeeper. So he attends all those games regularly for the last, at least what you know, 20, at least 20 years, right? So very special event, glad that they're going to be doing it. And then the match will kick off promptly against Plymouth North at 7:00 p.m. So very brief, there'll be members of, hopefully, from the Select Board will be there. I've reached out to both our Senator and both our state reps. Sometimes they will have the opportunity to stop by as well. And the members of the Hingham High School Veterans Appreciation Club will then go into the stands during the match, kind of pass the hat. Any money that is collected that night will be regifted or donated to Military Veterans Suicide Awareness Campaign, so to decrease that 22 a day, that stigma that we have currently in our nation, which is a growing epidemic. As we've seen, we were also touched tragically this weekend. This Friday, we had a veteran from Hingham who took his own life again. So it happens quite frequently, and we're not immune to it.
Keith, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for organizing that event.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Article C, which is reports of various Town Committees. I think, Tom, you're going to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, sure. So it's pretty simple. This is Article 3 each year of the warrant. It's simply accepting the reports of the committees. So these are all the committees that were formed by Town Meeting. There are a few committees in here that perhaps have, or have or may have completed their work by Town Meeting, but where they haven't exactly yet, I don't want to presume, and there's no harm in leaving them on here and removing them next year with thanks. So I would recommend the list as it's presented.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Joe, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Any members of public have any questions on this warrant article? All right, seeing none, I take a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article C.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Article G, which is a transfer from the stabilization fund. Michelle, you want to take this one?
Sure. So this is one of the perennial articles that we see each year, and there are funds left over from bond premiums and old school projects that were transferred through pre, prior Town Meetings. Thank you. Prior Town Meetings in the past, transferring those bond premiums from the school projects into the stabilization fund for the purpose of then using these funds in future years to decrease, to help pay for the interest costs on those school projects that we're still paying off. So essentially, we do a transfer each year of about $178,000 to offset the taxes that we would need to raise for those projects. So we're recommending, once again, doing that in FY '24.
Great. Thank you. Liz, any questions?
We don't specify the amount in the article. Is that right?
We usually, sorry. For most of these articles, we usually don't, but that is built into our debt service schedule, so through working with our AdCom liaisons, we'll make sure that will be in the comment and will be definitely included in the recommended motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Has this been reviewed by AdCom?
Not yet.
Okay.
It typically.
Which explains why there would not be a number at this point.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes. But we'll get through there.
This is what we do every year. I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Do any members of the public have any question or comments on this proposed warrant article? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article G.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. That brings us to Article Q, which is the establishment of a capital stabilization fund. Michelle, or Tom, who wants to take this one?
I think Michelle wants.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So this is one of the two stabilization funds, new stabilization funds, that we are proposing, starting in FY '24. This one is for capital purposes. So as Tom explained in the last meeting or the meeting before that, we're looking for different ways to try to provide more resources to the capital outlay budget and other capital projects, and we're proposing establishing this stabilization fund that, at least for now, would be credited with the receipts of our auctions process, where we're able to sell some of the surplus vehicles, supplies and equipment for the town, so essentially some of the capital projects and funds we've done in the past, and use those proceeds to fund capital projects going forward. So this would start July 1, 2023, funneling those receipts into this new fund. In future years, we would still need town meeting action to use the stabilization funds to augment the capital outlay budget for other, other capital projects, but we like setting aside, we like the idea of setting aside this money so that we can plan to have more capital resources available for the town going forward.
So, Michelle, typically, what kind of revenue do we get from those items that you mentioned? I mean, I know it probably fluctuates year to year, but do we know how much potential revenue would be going into the fund?
Sure. So this is a new program that Kathy Riley, our procurement and contracts manager, set up this year. So far, I believe we have about $50,000 in proceeds from the auctions, and that spanned different departments, including the school, the recreation department, fire, DPW, water, et cetera. Anything from an enterprise fund such as water or the country club would, those proceeds would go back to those enterprise funds because they need to stay there, but all of the general fund capital proceeds would go into this. So it's starting a little bit small, but it's very encouraging, and often it's more than we can get through a simple vehicle trade-in. So it's nice to see some of these equipment, vehicles, supplies, et cetera, that might be kind of taking up space and collecting dust, or that we might have paid to remove for disposal in the past. Now we're actually getting some money back into the general fund that we can use for future capital.
Great. Thank you. Joe, any questions?
So if we did not have this article, and there was a sale of these tangible items, where would the proceeds go?
The proceeds would go to the general fund, essentially would end up in our unassigned fund balance. So we're proposing setting them aside so that we can augment the capital budget this way.
So is this essentially creating, if you will, a subaccount of unassigned fund balance that is restricted for these purposes?
Yes. It won't be unassigned anymore, right? We're assigning it basically for this purpose.
But otherwise, it would have been unassigned?
Yes.
Got it. No other questions?
All right. Liz, any questions?
Is that the only funding source from the auction?
As of right now, we're setting up this account so that that revenue stream is dedicated. There's nothing stopping us from, say, we sell a municipal property in the future, we could always direct those proceeds to go in, but we can make those decisions at future times, and we will need a town meeting vote to move funds into this and a town meeting vote to move funds out of it, with the exception of dedicating the auction proceeds through this article. That will happen automatically.
Okay. Okay. So to dedicate funds from other sources or to appropriate, we need a two-thirds vote at town meeting?
John Cofflin's on the call. I believe you need a majority vote to put funds into the stabilization fund and a two-thirds vote to spend from the stabilization fund.
John, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, go ahead.
John, Ian, and Charles.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't think we needed two-thirds to take it out, but yeah, that's good to know.
I do have another question. So to the extent that these funds would have gone back into the operating account, those funds would no longer be available for operating purposes, and we would now need to go to town meeting to access these funds. Is that right?
What do you mean by operating purposes?
In other words, if, if an item is sold, the DPW, they've got a truck and they dispose of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, would those funds go to offset, for example, the purchase of another truck? And that we wouldn't have to go to town meeting for?
So right now...
But now, but this would now require us to go to town meeting?
I understand your question. So right now, through the, through the new auctions process that we've just set up, since that money is coming in as general fund money, it's still falling to fund balance. It still has to go through the fund balance process, so we would still need to appropriate that through either Article 6 or some other town meeting vote next year. Prior to setting up the auctions process, when we were doing vehicle trade-ins, that was going directly to a department, but it was often ending up being a smaller dollar amount. So there is a little bit, some departments aren't receiving those direct proceeds from trade-ins. It was really just in the case of vehicles.
Right.
Not surplus supplies or anything, but we're seeing more dollars that we want to direct towards general capital projects, and likely would be not necessarily tied to that department, but we'd be able to prioritize the capital needs on a yearly basis with these proceeds.
Got it. Okay. No other questions?
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, and members of the public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article Q.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm going to, as well, the motion carries. That brings us to Article S, which is an article related to the sale of 32 Rockwood Road. Emily, welcome back. Thank you for coming. I know you talked a lot about this last week, but if there are any additional questions or comments, I know we went over it in pretty good detail last week, but anything else to add from your presentation last week?
No. Happy to answer questions, but again, this warrant article would just authorize, not require, the select board to dispose of a property that was acquired through tax title in 1990, and get it back on the rolls and used potentially for accessory residential uses.
Great. Well, I do have one quick question. So if this is approved by town meeting and we go forward with it, how does the auction, how would the auction process work for a sale of property? Any idea? I don't think I've ever been involved with that.
Yeah, I probably am not the best person to respond to that, but...
I believe that Laurie and I, through the treasurer's office, will hold those auctions. As much as I'd love them to give me a gavel and a podium, they don't.
Yeah, so...
But there's a, there's a process, there's a whole engine dictating how those, those are done, I believe, and I think it's...
And it could be auction or RFP, so I think you have different...
It could be a procurement process.
Only reason why I ask it, that based on our discussion last week, because there's been a syndicate reach out to me and asked me how that process worked, and I thought I had no idea how that works.
Yeah.
John Cofflin, any insight into how that process works?
Yeah, sure, Bill. So there's actually two procedures, and you can pick which one you want to use. The first is because it's tax title, you can sell it through a custodian under the tax title statute, which is essentially an auction, almost like a foreclosure auction. The second way is you can just do a normal 30B-16, request for proposals, solicit proposals, and see what you get for a price. So because it's tax title property, you have the choice of going either way, and I think the select board can make that decision, if and when you decide to sell it.
Interesting. Thank you. All right. Any questions about this agenda item, Joe?
John, this is to you. I know you just turned off your camera. I think there's actually a U.S. Supreme Court case right now, which is challenging the constitutionality of tax title takings, about whether or not full compensation should otherwise be paid when there is a taking under a tax title. So I assume that we will be careful as we move forward with these, this property and other properties, just to make sure that we're, we're not stuck in the middle of...
Right, and that, yeah, and that would be a challenge to the original tax taking when the town acquired title back when that was done.
Yep.
Which would be different than the resale, could be something we're doing now, but if somebody wanted to reopen.
Right.
And challenge the validity of the original taking. I honestly, Joe, don't know how long ago that was, whether it's beyond the statute of limitations and all that stuff, but I can, we can take a look at that before we put it out to bid and be comfortable with it.
Great. Thank you.
So Emily has the date.
It was taken in 1990, and then the lay-up court final judgment issued in 2003.
Got it.
Liz, any questions?
I do have a question. Thank you, Emily. Just, just to clarify language, when you say accessory residential uses, that's obviously not the same as accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
Just so people know that.
Yes, correct. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, good. So I know we've talked a lot about this property, and I have no real questions about that or the process, just the fact that we're transferring the funds into the new capital stabilization fund that we just voted to support. Is that just because we want to have more seed money to start that account, or do you see these types of transfers going into that account going forward?
I think the answer is both. We did want to try to find some more resources in the short term for capital, but if we were looking at selling any other potential municipal properties, I know this one's fairly small, we'd have to do an evaluation at that time of where we would like to direct the proceeds.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Any members of the public have any question or comments on this proposed warrant article? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article S.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm going to, as well, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Article, Agenda Item 8 needs to be held until 7 o'clock, so I'm going to wait until 7 o'clock, because that is a joint session with CPC and the Advisory Committee. Any concerns with taking 9, 10, 11, and 12 at this point?
Nope. So 9 is ready. Emily is here. Susan has joined us on...
Emily's ready. Emily's like, I'm ready to go. All right.
I had another like 45 minutes to an hour.
Oops, save her an hour.
Super we could do.
And I see Susan up there, too. All right. Good evening, Susan.
Good evening.
All right, Emily, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Perfect. So we are here to jointly present an update on the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Requirement Compliance Process. The last time we met with the select board was in April, and at that time, we were presenting draft guidelines that have been issued by DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. Since that time, DHCD has finalized the guidelines, and now we're approaching an upcoming deadline. So as a reminder, Section 3A of Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, the zoning act, requires an MBTA community, and there's 175 of us, to have at least one zoning district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right, not by special permit or comprehensive permit or otherwise, and in which there are other criteria met. These include that there's a minimum density of 15 units per acre, that the district be not more than a half mile from a public transit station, there are no age restrictions, so it's not dedicated just for seniors, and that the housing that would be built is suitable for families. So that's just a, you know, a quick reminder of the topic that we're discussing. If we pop to the next slide, the, I just reviewed what the statute requires, Section 3A. The guidelines introduce a new concept of minimum unit capacity. The, the draft guidelines that we reviewed in April had categorized Hingham as a bus community, which, as you can see, means we would have had 20%, have to zone for up to 20% of our overall number of housing units as multifamily within the district. The most notable update in the final guidelines is that DHCD is now correctly categorizing the town as a commuter rail community, so that reduced our minimum unit capacity from, excuse me, just under 2,000 units, 1,986, to what you're seeing in this bottom chart, 1,490 units. Some of the other features is that, you know, we have to have a minimum land area of 50 acres within the overall district, and 75% of the district has to actually fall within that half mile from a transit station, but the additional 25% can reach out. On the next slide, this is just an updated calendar. It reminds you where we've been and shows you where we have to go. So I've, I've mentioned the briefing we held in April. At that time, this board authorized me to submit a community information form to DHCD so that we could remain in interim compliance with the regulations. As I've noted, the final guidelines came out actually in August. They were updated in October. That October update, I think you'll find this interesting, now includes provisions for basically inclusionary zoning, that we can require a certain number of affordable units to be built in the district in order to offset the impact that the additional housing may have on our denominator in the subsidized housing inventory. We have, since the, oh, and I'm sorry, DHCD also issued a compliance model in November to help communities assess, you know, how they, they might be able to craft a district. We have begun to analyze internally our existing zoning regulations and have been able to determine that we don't have any by right multifamily zoning in town. We do have provisions for multifamily zoning, it's just, it's permitted by special permit as opposed to by right. So in order to remain in compliance with the guidelines, we now would have to develop an action plan to amend our zoning in order to create that multifamily, in order to meet the provisions of Section 3A in the guidelines. So the deadline to submit the next form is January 31st. We'd have to submit by next week an action plan that identifies what steps we may take in order to assess, you know, where this type of zoning may be appropriate, and then potentially, you know, adopt new zoning. The deadline for that and for final compliance for our community is December 31st of 2024. So if you opt to submit the action plan, we would remain in interim compliance between January 31st of this year and December 31st of 2024. On the next slide, the, the action form that DHCD provides for communities to remain in interim compliance has four sections. It's just a six-page form. It's fairly preliminary, I would suggest. The first section, you know, just asks you to identify certain things, some of which are prescribed by DHCD, we're a commuter rail community, our unit capacity is at 1,490 units. It asks you to identify the contact person for, for DHCD to reach out to. There are two options for that. It's the town administrator or the community planning director. And then the, we would identify the core working group or team that would help to, you know, assess, do this parcel-by-parcel assessment that's required. We tentatively have identified that, you know, we'd need town council, our GIS conservation extraordinaire, and then two planners that would most likely be, you know, make up that team. The next section is just a housing overview. It asks you to identify what, you know, past housing initiatives you've undertaken, and as you know, in recent years, and we've, actually in 2021, created a housing plan for the town, and then have the updated master plan, which includes certain housing goals. And we've been working toward, Liz, as you alluded to earlier, an accessory dwelling unit zoning amendment, which is one of the identified goals of actually both of those plans. So those would be our responses in that category. It then asks the town to identify preliminary zoning strategies. Are you going to create an overlay district? Are you going to look to 40R? Do you have an existing zoning district that doesn't presently allow multifamily housing, and you could just change the use table? So we, we've identified some potential options in that category, and then we would need to provide a timeline when, you know, when we might complete our initial analysis, when we're going to hold public meetings, and, and then, you know, basically working towards town meeting. And so the first deadline we'd be working towards, if we opt to remain in interim compliance, would be the December 1st warrant, zoning article submission deadline for this upcoming year, so that we can then hit the annual town meeting next year, and so then we'd meet the overall December 31st, 2024 deadline. I would say that just on the form, to give, it's not really a very, it's not a binding plan. Some of the language used in the form is most likely, where may you locate a district, what, you know, what potential is there for this, or what is proposed. So that's, I think, comforting in some respects. On the next page, this is just, well, actually, this is interesting. As you know, we have three transit stations in town, the three, well, the Hingham Ferry, and then the West Hingham and Nanteska Junction commuter rail stations. We also have developable area that falls within a half mile of transit stations that are out of town, so we could also look, you know, to that little slice near the East Waymouth Commuter Rail Station, or the, you know, that point over near the Cohasset Station. Again, it's just 75% of the district has to fall within those circles. So we do have options. I will note that the guidelines require, again, the district to consist of at least 50 acres of developable land, and we could have multiple districts, but one of them would need to consist of a minimum of 25 contiguous acres, and the others cannot be less than five acres. So it could be scattered within some of those circles, or, or we could look to a single one possibly. If you look at the, the next slide, some of the potential districts, we may start the parcel-by-parcel analysis where we already have multifamily housing, because, you know, as you know, Hingham's made a lot of progress in terms of housing development in recent years. So some of those examples, if I just, this slide highlights our existing multifamily housing, and then by, by permit mechanisms. So the green ones are 40Bs, the orangey-colored ones are special permits. So to give you an idea of what the 15 units per acre may look like, we have the... So to give you an idea of what the 15 units per acre may look like, we have the Cove Development. It's in green on the southwest end of the Hingham Ferry radius. That was permitted by 40B, but if we were to rezone it, it would already comply with the 15 unit, well, actually exceeds the 15 unit minimum. It has a density already of approximately 22 units per acre, it's 220 units, on 9.3 acres. So that's potentially right there, 9.3 acres towards our 50-acre minimum. Conversely, well, on Beals, again, on Beals Street, but highlighted in orange, the Beals Cove Village has a density of approximately seven units per acre. So the 15 units per acre, it would look somewhere in between the Cove and the Beals Cove Village properties, but that's, you know, another area that the town could possibly assess. In green, closer to the center of the Hingham Ferry circle is, well, and partially in orange, the two Avalon Developments, Avalon 1 and 2, in combination are just under seven acres and have a density of 41 units per acre. So we have, you know, the areas that we can look to in the near term if you opt to remain in compliance. And if you option not to, the next slide will just show you what the impact of that would be. So if a town falls out of compliance or interim compliance, we would no longer be eligible for certain state funds. The specified funds are the housing choice. They have planning grants and capital grants. The town has actually accessed that program in the past because we are a housing choice community. The local capital projects fund, we were not eligible for anyways, but housing authorities are, so it could potentially affect the Hingham Housing Authority. And then finally, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, we would no longer be eligible for. The guidelines also say that DHCD in its discretion could consider noncompliance when making other grant awards. And so some of the other ones we've accessed in the past, like we had a rapid recovery planning grant a couple of years ago that was valued at $60,000. And so, you know, the housing choice grant that we got in 2020, it was $140,000. These aren't significant numbers, but it may be helpful to remain at least in interim compliance. And then while we haven't accessed the Mass Works grant in the last five years, that one actually has the potential to be the most impactful because they, that program offers significantly greater benefits. So that's the presentation. And again, the request before you tonight is to authorize, as you did back in April, a submission of the action plan form to DHCD, just to maintain the interim compliance.
Emily, thank you very much. Susan, do you have anything to add briefly to that?
Yeah, I think Emily's presentation was very comprehensive. It was kind of a broad overview. If there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan. So just, I guess, just a comment. So just to be clear, you said this would not bind us to anything going forward, right? This just keeps us in the, I guess, the pipeline for the requirements and for the grant money if we decide we want to pursue that, correct?
Yep, that's correct. And at the end of the day, there's no way to bind the town because it's town meeting that has to change our zoning, and that's a discretionary body, and they may or may not choose to amend any zoning, even if a zoning amendment gets brought forward.
So in terms of how this would work then, so if, I guess, we would continue to follow this along, I mean, if we do vote favorably tonight, and then in the fall, would it go over to the planning board? I mean, obviously, it's zoning change, so ultimately, it's going to fall into the purview of the planning board, correct?
Yes. The planning board is responsible for holding the hearings on any proposed zoning amendment. I would offer that the select board or the planning board, in addition to other agencies, has the ability to initiate a zoning article. Our plan right now is to continue to update both the planning board and the select board and any members of the public periodically. So what we've sketched out in terms of a timeline is being able by the June, you know, June-ish, present different options based on our internal assessment of these transit station areas. And then, you know, when there's some comfort that the select board, the planning board is comfortable with a particular district, we can, again, internally start drafting the zoning. We hope to get that publicly reviewed by September-ish so that we're, you know, positioned to submit something that is, you know, is in good shape by the December 1st deadline.
Great. Thank you. Liz, any questions?
Sure. Thank you, Emily. Well, I'm glad to see that we got reassigned as a community rail community. I was going to ask you that, commuter rail community. In terms of the action plan, I know you said it's not binding. Obviously, we want to have public input, plus it has to go to town meeting, so anything that's in that plan is really a draft and is subject to change.
Yes.
Right? It sounds like quite a bit of work to get done by next Tuesday.
Yeah. The form, actually, we have drafted, so that's pretty much ready to go. It's after, if the form is submitted, it's this parcel-by-parcel analysis that we'd have to complete that really will be time-consuming
Okay.
... over the next couple of months.
Okay. Do you have an estimate kind of how much time that will take from that core team?
I don't yet. I do think it's, a lot of the work is going to fall on Lonnie Fornier
Yeah.
... because it does require a GIS assessment. But once, you know, and again, we can provide updates periodically, so you have a sense of where we're headed.
Yeah.
But it may be possible, again, by starting with our existing multifamily housing, to create a district where even, even though the housing's already been built,
Mm-hmm.
... it's just changing the permitting mechanism for those properties.
Okay. Have you heard or talked to other neighboring communities? Are they adding resources or bringing in consultants to do this work?
Yeah, some are. I believe, and the state offers resources.
Okay.
So if it seems like it's something we need outside help for, we have the ability to apply for certain grants and access technical assistance.
Okay.
So some have done that. I believe in the preliminary round, there were about 15 of the 175 communities had accessed those resources already.
Okay.
So it would be interesting. Bill, I know you in the past had asked a question about what the fiscal impacts of this, these new zoning requirements may be. That type of assessment may be helpful, you know, for this board, the planning board, town meeting, to understand whether or not the costs outweigh the
Right.
Right.
... vice versa. So that's an area, maybe, you know, some help would be great.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be helpful for us to understand how much it will cost to comply and what we're giving up in terms of grants. I think we all heard loud and clear, the governor's mandate is around housing. That's certainly a focus, so, and I know she mentioned Mass Works during her short remarks that we heard at the MMA, so that's certainly, I think, a risk for us if we don't comply. Thank you.
Joe?
Yes, thank you, Emily. Great presentation. I've got a, just to be clear, I'm absolutely in favor of moving forward with submitting the plan, submitting the form. But I do have some questions. Getting back to the funds that are potentially at jeopardy if we are not in compliance, are there any implications for federal funds where they may assume that we're compliant with state and if we're not, we jeopardize receiving federal funds?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. It's really, it's state zoning and state funding that is specified in the grant, excuse me, in the statute.
Right.
And then also in the guidelines. So I'm not aware of any. Susan, do you, could you think of any?
No, unless it's federal funds that are limited by the state, so those could be some discretionary DHCD grants where they receive funding from the federal government that then they can pass through.
Right.
But I'm not aware of any that would affect Hingham.
Am I correct that there are no affordability requirements explicit in the statute? I understand that we can, we can do something, but there's no affordability requirement.
That's correct.
And can you just help me understand how ADUs, accessory dwelling units fit in? If they're, if ADUs are allowed, does that transform a property into a multifamily?
No.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
The definition of multifamily is three or more units on a property, or two or more buildings, each with at least two units in them. So what we right now have for ADUs, a principal single-family dwelling, and then one accessory unit, wouldn't meet either of those requirements.
Okay. One final question. To the extent that our zoning allows multifamily as of right, would that supersede any existing permits that allowed multifamily housing? So if there were restrictions in those permits, would those restrictions then go away?
Yeah, it depends on the property and it depends on the zoning that's crafted. So if we, let's, if, let's look at the Hingham Shipyard overall, because there are many ongoing conditions of the special permit
Sure.
... that authorized that development. If that were changed to allow multifamily housing by right, but at a density that's lower than what already exists there, but still met all the requirements of Section 3A, they, it, the permits would remain in effect, right? They'd live on. If magically the zoning came out to exactly what is there, then we'd have, then potentially we could lose the ongoing conditions associated with the previously issued permits. Or if we create zoning that incentivizes
Right.
... someone to demolish, you know, what their existing buildout is and take advantage of the new multifamily zoning, that would be by right, we would no longer have the ongoing conditions. The, our sense is that any zoning would still require, obviously, a site plan review process, and so the planning board would have the ability to impose conditions related to, you know, site impacts. But that would be for new or future redevelopment.
Yeah, and Joe, I can, I can add a couple of things to that, which is, right now, the thought is to approach it as an overlay district as opposed to a kind of base district.
Yep.
So that the underlying zoning would remain in place. In addition, there's the ability, if there are certain areas where there's existing multifamily, other types of housing that are under specific permits, is to look at the types of conditions and potentially roll those into the requirements of the new zoning as long as they don't run counter to the statute or the guidelines. And in addition, for, if the requirement, if Hingham were to adopt the zoning and include an affordability requirement, and the existing housing doesn't meet all of those requirements, then they can't say, well, we're just under the as-of-right, we no longer need to comply with our permit, because they wouldn't be able to comply with their as-of-right unless they meet all of those requirements, which might include affordability that an existing developed project might not have. So there's, there's a number of ways to safeguard against losing the protection of existing conditions under permits for existing developments.
Yeah, I was specifically concerned about losing 40B protection if all of a sudden a property could then, as of right, proceed. So in other words, that they got multifamily housing under 40B and now it's as of right, is it no longer an affordability requirement?
Well, to the extent that there are recorded regulatory agreements,
Yep.
... there are also kind of protections that are beyond zoning that are, are tied documents in their title. So there's, that's what I'm saying. These are all questions that need to get evaluated in the analysis that Emily was talking about. That will happen over the next few months.
Got it. Great. No other questions. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this, on this agenda item? All right, seen that, I take a motion.
I move to authorize Emily Wentworth to submit the MBTA action plan form to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm going to as well, the motion carries. Emily, thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily.
All right, before we move to seven, I'm going to move through items 10, 11, and 12. I don't think they'll be very long. Next item on the agenda is appointments. I would make a motion to appoint Tom Burbank to the Veterans Council to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All of them favor. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
Nominates while the motion carries. Any other appointments this evening?
No.
Hearing none. Move to item 11, which is public comment. Any members of the public have any com, oh, Liza, come on up. Let me just read this for you.
Hi, Liza, Riley, 19 Porter's Cove Road. I am hearing that there's a new forecast out and that there's been a significant increase in the deficit of the forecast due to town expenses. And so I'm, want to, I've looked on the website to see where this forecast, the new, the FY24 forecast document is. It's not there yet. Looked through my notes that, I guess, usually the first week of February is when the forecast report comes out. I want to raise a concern of, I served nine years on the school committee and have gone through the budget process. This would be the 10th year. That last year, going through the process, and I know we're in a very difficult situation. We have an override to consider. I fully support passing an override for all services in town, schools and the town. But last year, going through the budget process, there was an increase on the town side of the budget at the very last minute in the budget process. And now it seems like this is not as last minute, but it's happening again. And the schools have been advocating to this board for many years to address the challenges that the school budget has had due to enrollment, student needs, state mandates, that we were getting pushed off of no one willing to talk to us about these issues for many years. And fortunately, two years ago, the Sustainable Budget Task Force was put together to finally look at them. I was very pleased. Okay, good. And there would be cooperation too on both sides. And I, I'm discouraged this year of hearing, okay, now there's another big jump in town expenses, when the schools were the one begging for the analysis of the town budget and the operating budget. And then last year, there was a, another surprise on the town side, and now supposedly this time again. And I recognize, when I would be talking to people over the years about school expenses, I heard, well, what about the town? The town needs things too. And my response was always, put it on the table. Let's talk about all of it. I just want everyone to continue to work together and be open with one another as soon as these changes are found. Because I don't feel that it's fair that the schools have been advocating for so long and pushing so long. And I heard from many parents during, before special town meeting and before we passed foster school, how did we get here? Why did it take so long? And I'm here tonight because I heard it again from some parents when they heard that there was this new forecast and the deficit had grown, and they said, how do we do this again? And they said, how do we do this again? When are we going to be able to address some significant needs of students in the school budget when these other expenses keep coming up that weren't known? So I would like you to be sensitive to that. I know we all have challenges. I will support whatever the override effort is. We all need this, our town needs these services. I understand that. I would just like to ask for you to be a little more cooperative of and open with everyone. I look forward to seeing this forecast and where these expense, these new expenses are coming from. But let's be more together on this. Because there are parents who want these, they're voters too. And they want this to happen for their kids and for the future of the town, for the investment in the schools. And the reason we lost enrollment during COVID was because we didn't have those resources we had been asking for, for so long. So let's do this. Town is on our seal, or schools are on our seal, and we need to do this, but we need to do it for everyone. And so please be a little, get as transparent as possible and work together with your colleagues to, on the school side to, to make it all work for everybody.
Liza, to thank you. Obviously, we're not going to comment on, on issues. But we are going to start the discussion next Tuesday night. So come back next Tuesday night, and we can tell you a little more about some of your questions. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any public comment this evening? All right, Seane, I'm going to briefly go to town administrator select board reports. Michelle, anything?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, anything?
I just want to let folks know that we had a successful blood drive this afternoon. While we don't have a complete count on units actually collected, we had 33 of 34 people actually show up, including two, two first-time donors. So we'll be looking to do this again in the April timeframe.
Thank you. Tom, anything tonight?
Sure, just a real quick note that, to let everyone know that we have added a page to the town website with information relating to the override that we'll be, we will be bringing to the town meeting in April. While there is a lot of information here, there will be a lot more information to come as we've worked to finalize the budget. You can get to the new webpage at hangham-ma.gov/override.
Tom, thank you. Liz, anything this evening?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Joe, anything to report?
Nothing this evening.
I have nothing either. So with that, we will recess in place, and we welcome CPC and advisors to join us. So CPC is not with us this evening. You're the sole representative?
And Vicki Donnelly.
Oh, Vicki's there too. Okay, so you don't have a quorum.
And Vicki Donnelly is on remotely, so we don't have a quorum.
Okay, you have a quorum, okay. All right. I'm going to note, just so the chairs know, I, I did previously read the open meeting law language that we start our meetings with, and identified our board members. So the chairs are welcome to adopt that language if they would like. Let me turn it over to you, George, so you can call your board and your meeting to order.
Thank you, Bill. We actually convened upstairs, and we read the opening statement and went into recess. So we are reconvening from our recess.
Excellent. And Julie said you don't have a quorum, right?
Correct.
So, okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a joint session with the Community Preservation Committee, an advisory committee to discuss Warren Article N, which is the Community Preservation Committee Recommendations. We do have the chair of CPC with us, Julie Straley. Thank you, Julie. And we have 11 items here this evening. So I think because we have 11, maybe you introduce each item, and then we'll take questions on each one individually. Just because if we wait till the end, people might confuse. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Julie.
It's a lot. Hi, my name is Julie Straley, 231 Lovett Street. I'm chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And just in, and to introduction, under the Community Preservation Act, a CPC's official charge is to make a recommendation to annual town meeting on what to spend CPA funds. So to that end, our committee's nine members have been meeting since September to review preliminary and final applications. And we had great work by the committee. I'm really pleased to present the projects to you tonight. So, next slide. So just a quick review for anyone who's new to this process. The Community Preservation Act was passed by the Massachusetts Legislature in 2000, in 2000, adopted by Hangham in 2001, and our first grants were voted at Annual Town Meeting 2003. CPA funds and its sources are completely separate from Hangham's operating budget. It's a combination of a 1.5% surcharge on Hangham's real estate tax levy against real property, plus a distribution from the Commonwealth's Community Preservation Trust Fund. So the Community Preservation Act divides the funds into, or projects into four categories. One is open space, affordable housing, historic preservation, and then finally recreation, which is technically a subset of open space. And there is a 10% minimum that communities have to spend for three different category areas, which is open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. CPCs or towns have the ability to borrow for large projects. And so we currently, or recent years, we borrowed money to pay for two projects. One was in 2016, when we bought the 49-plus acres of land off of South Pleasant Street, we refer to that as the Lehner property. That's a 20-year payout, so it's due to complete in 2037. And then from Annual Town Meeting 2020, we purchased the Benjamin Lincoln House. There's a minimum debt payment due this year of about $25,000. But since the payoff amount is $70,000, the CPC voted in consultation with the select board to set aside that $70,000 to pay off the loan with this year's budget. So, next slide. So there's a lot going on, on this page here. But first, you want to look at the top left of the chart under funding sources. So the 1.5% surcharge is the $1.2 million number at the top. Then from the trust fund, we had a payout of $370,349. So that was about 30% of our 1.5% surcharge, for a total of $1.6 million. The middle-left chart is the total funding minus the debt payments for the Lehner property, plus the debt payment or the payoff amount for the Benjamin Lincoln House. I put an asterisk there about the Benjamin Lincoln House, which I'll discuss in a minute. And the bottom-left chart shows the, those categories of minimum 10% spending across the three categories of community housing, historic preservation, and open space. And I'll note that for a number of years, since 2016, our open space minimum 10% has been satisfied each year by the debt payment for the purchase of that property. So on the upper right-hand side, under, at the top, we had 19 preliminary applications for a total of $2.3 million. So we went through the process of determining what applications were eligible. And some of it is it's just not eligible under the Community Preservation Act rules and regulations. Other applications were just not ready. We deemed them not ready for prime time, or the application was not complete by the CPC standards. So we are able to narrow the application pool down to 11 final applications for a total request of $1.27 million. So in the middle-right, you can see again, we have to set aside money for debt payments. So total, the minimum that we could have spent this year was $220,226. That's the Lehner land, plus the minimum payment for the Benjamin Lincoln House. So we determined from the debt schedule that the payoff amount for the Benjamin Lincoln House was $70,100. And then there's a little asterisk from that chart to the left that I'm explaining. $5,000 is a cost of issuance fee that we've tacked on to the debt payments. So each year, when the town issues bands bond anticipation notes, which is short-term debt that we're using to pay for these CPA projects, there is a cost to the town called a cost of issuance, which are fees paid to our financial advisors and bond counsel. So the borrowing on these two CPA projects, the CPC's estimated share of these fees for FY24 is $5,000. So we tack this fee onto the payoff for the Benjamin Lincoln House. We could have tacked it on to the Lehner land dollar amount, but just, I had to pick one of the two, so I added it on to the Benjamin Lincoln House. So that gives you a total of $270,379 that we set aside for debt payments, and the CPC voted to do that. And then finally, in the lower right, this is my crude example of just basically taking the $1.6 million of our sources, subtracting out the total application request, subtracting out the debt payments, and you'll see that it's, actually, we have a surplus of $80,316. This is very rare. Most years, you know, the Community Preservation Committee is just, you know, trying to make deals here and there and partially fund projects. But just this year, it just turned out that we had projects of all kinds of different dollar amounts, and it just ended up being that we had a surplus. So on the next page, I will show you how we get to that. So this is the listed projects with the requested dollar amount. So we'll go through each project in the next slides, but I want to show you on this page, the complete list, and show you what we did with the surplus funds. So on the requested column, like on the previous slide, you'll show at the bottom, well, there's a text box at the bottom, but the surplus is $80,316. Great, thank you. And then, so that's the requested amount from the applications. And then you'll see on the right-hand side what CPC voted to recommend. And you'll see two highlighted numbers, which is that we voted to give more money to the Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund, so by $35,000. And then we voted to give the Girl Scout House ADA compliance project $9,000, sorry, $10,000 more than their request, which I will explain when I get to that slide for that project. And so in the end, we have a surplus of $35,316, which we are allowed to roll over into next year. So we put it in reserve, and we can put that towards projects to spend money on next year. So the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously for this list of projects and dollar amounts. We came to consensus on our surplus. You know, some people would have wanted to spend more on maybe the opportunity fund, or less on another thing. But basically, this is what we came down to in the end. So, next slide, please. So project number one is actually an administrative fund for our committee. So the Community Preservation Act allows communities to spend up to 5% of their budget each year on fees associated with administering the Community Preservation Act. So our request this year is $50,000, which is 3% of our total budget. And the things that we could spend this money on are, we pay membership fees to the Community Preservation Coalition, which provides our CPC with consulting services on all kinds of questions about how to run the committee and how to comply with the Community Preservation Act. We pay a recording clerk to take minutes, so that all nine of us can be part of the conversation for our meetings all the time. We have legal fees where we would consult with an attorney for determination of eligibility. But we actually have a lot of work to do in what I call the off-season. So after we kind of hand all these projects off to AdCom to write comments, get ready for town meeting, we're going to be working on, we have a lot of work to do. We're going to work on updating our applications, updating our process manual. We need some admin support and to help better track projects and payments for the Community Preservation Act. So all these admin funds could go towards doing those kinds of projects. And any unspent admin funds will be rolled into the CPA Reserve Fund and can be spent on projects in the following year. So that's that first project. Do you have any questions?
You know, maybe I'll strike my, my earlier idea, because I don't want to interrupt your cadence of your presentation. So why don't you go through all of them?
That's fine.
Go back, and I'll open it up to everybody for questions. So why don't you just continue along? I don't want to interrupt your cadence on that one, so go ahead.
Okay. All right, so next up is the Hangham Affordable Trust Opportunity Fund. So this is in the Affordable Housing CPA category. The Hangham Affordable Housing Trust was created in 2007 with the mission to preserve and develop affordable housing. So under Chapter 40B, Hangham can currently count 1,010 units, 11.42% as affordable. However, technically, only 620 units are actually affordable. So this is an example. There are 281 rentals at Avalon Shipyard. They qualify as eligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory, but only 71 are occupied by income-eligible households. The Cove at Beale Street, 220 units qualify for SHI, but only 50 are occupied by income-eligible households. So the Hangham Master Plan calls on the Hangham Affordable Housing Trust to contribute five affordable units per year over the next decade. And so to that end, the Affordable Housing Trust has a plan, planned out the next 18 months. It has projects in play right now that are, you know, houses are getting renovated. And the plan, CPA grant of $700,000 would permit them to acquire two properties over that 18 months and continue with renovations and other projects. The CPC did not grant any funds to the Hangham Affordable Housing Trust last year. Instead, the Affordable Housing Funds were granted to South Shore Habitat for Humanity, who created two units on Whiting Street. So because there are more funds available than the total amount requested this year, which again, almost never happens, the CPC voted to increase the requested amount to the Affordable Housing Trust by $35,000 to a total of $735,000. And we reckon, because we recognize that the Affordable Housing Trust has its work cut out for them in this current market, and hopefully, any extra dollars can help. So next, I just have, I know it's really wordy and dense, but there are some rules for, under the Community Preservation Act for existing housing applications. And the next four applications are existing houses, housing units that have applications before us, and they have to follow some certain rules. So the state legislature's original intent for the Community Preservation Act was to spur the creation of new affordable housing units in communities. So with that in mind, the CPA was passed with specific prohibition of rehabilitation of housing units, unless the unit was created using CPA funds. If affordable housing is created using CPA funds, any type of project is eligible, including preservation and rehabilitation and/or restoration efforts. And this is going to apply to the next three applications. If affordable housing was not created using CPA funds, preservation is the only type of project that is eligible, and that is the fourth application that we're going to go over. And then, just quickly, what, how is preservation defined? By the Community Preservation Act, it's protection of personal or real property from injury, harm, or destruction. And here's a partial list of examples. The building envelope and site work to preserve the structural integrity of the housing, roof, siding, and window replacements to assure the water tightness of the housing, upgrading dangerous electrical or plumbing services, replacement of dangerous building systems which threaten the housing units, and finally, installation of hardwired smoke alarms, sprinklers, and other building fire suppression systems. That last one is going to be key in our discussion of the fourth project. So in other words, CPA preservation, well, I think I got the point across. So next, three projects are at the Scotland Street property run by the Hangham Housing Authority at 132 Scotland Street. This is under the Affordable Housing CPA category. So this property was acquired by the town at Annual Town Meeting 2006 using CPA funds. This is before the Affordable Housing Trust was created. Because of that, any preservation and rehabilitation and/or restoration efforts can be found. Because of that, any preservation and rehabilitation and/or restoration efforts can be funded. So project number one is the house building envelope, and that's the picture on the left. The project is going to remove existing trim and the bay window, replace, and then replace that bay window with a regular window to save money. But basically, there's a lot of work around the envelope, the outside of the building that needs some work. So that request is for $15,592. Just a note that the Hingham Housing Authority gets no operating or capital funding from any source for this property. The rent is set at low income, and so because of that, it's not a lot of money at all to pay for this kind of capital project. So the second project at Scotland Street is the garage building envelope, which is the picture on the right. You can see the rot and the trim. So the work done to this house, to the garage, is similar to the house, about rotted trim and siding, but also the roof needs to be replaced. And I'd like to add that the insurance carrier for this property has sent a letter noting that the repairs that are needed to the house and the garage need to be addressed in order to avoid cancellation of coverage. So that project is $12,964. And then finally, I don't have a picture, but I think you can picture in your mind what a boiler is, and that needs replacement, that it's been kind of living on borrowed time and needs to be replaced. So I would like to note that all the quotes are at cost because the Quincy Housing Authority, to which the running of the Hingham Housing Authority properties is outsourced, has its own in-house contractors who would do the work. So the quotes for the work on these three projects are as low as possible. So the next project is under, also under Affordable Housing category. This is elderly housing units at 30 Thaxter Street. There are 84 units. This housing was not created or purchased using CPA funds. So as noted in the previous discussion, it's only eligible under preservation to protect the housing structure from injury, harm, or destruction. So as you can see in this picture, these are doors that are going in, from the main outside door into the hallway where the units go off of. And so this is a door that is propped open, and you can't see it, but there's like a clear plastic door holder stuck underneath the door. And what has been happening for a long time is that these doors are very, very heavy because they're fire doors, and the residents are elderly or disabled. It's very hard to open and close these doors. So what has ended up happening is that they get held open with these stoppers. So this creates a risk of damage to and destruction of the structure if there's a fire, because if the door is not closed, then a fire can spread more quickly right up the stairwell or from the stairwell into the first-floor hallway. The system that is proposed, the request is $40,535, is a door hold-open system. So what happens is that the doors, as I explained, there's magnets that hold the door open, and then if a fire alarm is triggered, the doors automatically close. And so the, that would protect the building from destruction because the doors would close and stop the fire from spreading. This project is endorsed by the Hingham Fire Chief and the Hingham Fire Marshal, who were consulted about this project. And so again, the request is really to protect the structure under the CPA, but also would protect the residents. But anyway, that's the Thaxter Street project. So next up, in the Recreation category, this is the Cronin Basketball Court. So the request is $178,945. This court is on, just right around the corner on Burr Road, on the fields behind Town Hall. It gets a lot of use, especially during COVID, got a ton of use by kids and adults of all ages. So the court has been repaired in the past, and now it is beyond repair. So the new court would be built using post-tension concrete, which is a stronger version of concrete because it's been reinforced with steel, and it has a 30-year life expectancy. And there's the picture of some of the damage, though the cracks are everywhere, and they're very, as you can maybe tell, they're pretty wide. So next up on a request also under the Recreation category is pickleball study and design. So this is $55,500 to determine the most optical, optimal location in town and the design of how many courts would fit. So if anyone has any questions about what pickleball is, it's a combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong. It uses a smaller court than a tennis court. It's 20 feet by 44 feet. I don't know if you can really tell in this picture, but this, these are pickleball courts in Hull, built with CPA funds. And they're just so much smaller than a tennis court. So you see the layout there, and then they have just different striping. And so it is the fastest-growing sport in America. The tennis courts in Hingham are currently lined for pickleball. It's not ideal, though, because the net is not the correct height. A tennis net is not the same height as a pickleball net. There's a non-volley zone that it's difficult to differentiate, and you cannot play around the post, which apparently is part of the game. So also, there's competition for court time between the tennis players and the pickleball players. So within the last five years, around the South Shore, outdoor courts that have been built, Abington has built six pickleball courts, Braintree eight, Duxbury nine, Hull four, Marshfield 10, and Weymouth two. And the 2020 athletic field and outdoor court study completed by the town, this study was paid for with CPA funds, recommended building pickleball courts in Hingham. So the idea would be to pick one location and build a minimum of six courts, but the ideal would be eight to 10. And the Recreation Commission does not intend to replace tennis courts with pickleball. It's just the study's going to find the ideal location and see what happens. Okay. So next up, we have Hingham Public Library Newspaper Digitized. This is under Historic Preservation for $21,000. So the Hingham Public Library has microfilm reels of Hingham newspapers dating back to 1827. And the project would digitize all these reels of microfilm and add to an online database. So newspapers from 1927 to 1976 will be available to search on any computer in the world with an internet connection. And issues of the Hingham Journal from 1977 to present, which are copyrighted, they will be added to an online database that is searchable, but only from computers within the Hingham Public Library. All issues will also be rendered keyword-searchable via optical character recognition to allow for faster, easier use. There are no future or ongoing costs for website management. There are no future ongoing costs for data housing and no monthly subscriptions or restrictions on access to data. And going forward, Hingham Public Library will pay the annual cost, which is $175 a year, to send all future reels of newspaper microfilm for digitization in addition to the database. So benefits quickly, to preserve the collection's content for future generations. And apparently, the more you use microfilm, it degrades over time. So this is just another way of protecting this information. And it provides instant accessibility for use in classrooms or homes, and then would also connect Hingham to a broader web of digitized local newsprint, because other towns are also doing the same thing and are added to this database. So for example, Situate, town of Situate has done this already, so you can search newspaper articles from, you know, in Hingham of Situate news articles, just an example. Okay. So finally, no, sorry, we have two more. Sorry. It's like, the former tree in Park Barn. This is a Historical Commission application. It's in the Historical category. This is Eight Short Street, and you see on the lower left, if you drive by it on 228, it's across from the gas station, right near, right at Hingham Center. So it's an Italianate building style, dates back to 1857. It's listed on the inventories of historical, architectural, and archaeological assets of the town of Hingham and of the Commonwealth. From 1857 to 1894, it served as a school in Hingham Center. It then was relocated to Short Street to serve a central fire station until 1942. It was a World War II rationing board until 1946, then converted to a tree in Park Barn in 1947. Today, it's rented by a furniture and cabinet maker who specializes in 18th century and shaker-style furniture. This gentleman has also done a ton of work and repair on the building itself, including rehabbing the windows. So the request is $93,000, and this is going to repaint the building, but it's also used to restore, repair, or replace architectural features which have deteriorated or fallen off the building. Prepare the building to be painted and paint the building envelope. You can see in the middle picture, we have bubbled and chipped paint with clabberds exposed to damage. And on the picture on the right, this is just one of the many examples around this building where trim pieces have fallen off. And I circled the top right, it's just like rotted, exposed woods, and the boards that were over that fell down on the ground. So this project has sought funding back and forth between the CPC and the town's Capital Outlay Committee for several years. All the while, deterioration of the building has continued. And as we know, Capital Outlay has a long list of incredibly important funding requests from all town departments, just not enough money. So this is where CPA can make a difference to save the building. Now, finally, the Girl Scout House ADA Compliance. This is also in the Historic Preservation category. So you see in the bottom right, this Girl Scout House is also on Burr Road, right next door to us. And there have been issues where a complaint was filed with the state back in 2016 for lack of accessibility. So the Girl Scouts fundraised and built an accessible ramp and doorway along the side of the building, and this grant would remedy ADA issues inside the building. It would fix the uneven floor service in the main hall, reconfigure the kitchen to be accessible in layout and appliances, and add an accessible restroom. So on the lower left, you can see those stairs, they're currently, those are four stairs you would have to climb to even access the restroom once you're inside the building. And once you're inside the restroom, it's not configured as accessible at all. So built in 1929, this is a colonial revival-style building representing Depressia-era architecture. Maintenance of the house was funded 25 years, funded for 25 years by local Girl Scout councils. But since 2013, the Girl Scouts of Hingham has solely funded utilities and maintenance, funded by dues, fundraising, fundraising, and generous donations. There are 342 girls in grades K through 12 from all the schools in town participating. There's actually been more, more young women or girls participating before the pandemic, but they hope to grow up the numbers again. And they have support from hundreds of adult volunteers. The house also serves as a meeting and event space for community organizations such as churches, the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts, the Hingham Historical Society, Garden Club, Campfire Girls, Ladies Club, and private rentals. So $99,000 is the, was the request, and that was 70% of the total project cost. The Girl Scouts have been fundraising for a couple of years and have raised $30,000 of the $40,000 needed to reach the total project cost of $139,000. And the CPC felt that given the surplus of funds left over, we could give that last $10,000 so they can just get started on making this building compliant because there are kids who could use the compliance, the accessibility. So with that, that is the end of our projects.
Julie, thank you so much. My appreciation to the committee, but thank you for your leadership this year. You've done a phenomenal job. A lot of, a lot of very deserving projects on here. Tree in Parks, we've waited a while. Pickleball, as you said, is beginning very popular, the Girl Scout House. But overall, I think the committee's commitment to affordable housing is very impressive and one of our most pressing needs in town. So great work, very much appreciate the recommendations and all the effort that went into this. So with that, I'll turn over to Liz to see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Julie. We are so grateful for your leadership on this and all the work that you're doing to get us sorted out and all the work that will come in the off-season, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I love seeing the, the project lists. I appreciate that you were generous with the extra funds. Certainly, we want to spend the funds when we can on, on important projects. And I echo what Bill said, I, you know, that affordable housing is certainly a goal of the town. It's outlined in the master plan last year. We were hoping for a little more to go for, towards affordable housing, so thank you for making that effort this year. I don't really have any questions on this, but thank you. That was really comprehensive explanation of each project. Thank you. You're welcome.
Joe, any questions?
Well, I actually will have some questions. But I really do appreciate the work of the committee. It is so vital to the town, and you do things that the town sometimes would like to do and can't directly afford, so thank you. On item number one, which is the sum of money for operating expenses.
Yep.
How does that compare to last year?
It is up. From, last year was $20,000. For a couple of years, we were only asking $20,000. Before that, the CPC had an administrator who the admin fund would pay for that administrator, and so it was up at $50,000 for many years. And then there was a dip in recent years when we didn't have an admin person assigned to CPC to pay. And so the going up in funds is just a recognition that we're going to have to, to get our affairs in order better, that we would, could put funds towards that.
And any sense of how that compares to neighboring towns in terms of their operating expenses?
No. I mean, I know you're, they're, you're only allowed to go up to 5% of your budget, so, you know, we've been down to where this is 3%, so I don't know that, but I can find out if you want.
You know, we always tend to benchmark things, so just trying to get a sense of that.
Yeah.
Dropping down to item number six, which I think that's the, for the fire door hold-open system. Have you, has anyone been in touch with the building department about that? You mentioned the fire department, I didn't hear mention of the building.
Yes. So Vicki, are you able to speak? Because Vicki was a liaison to this project, and this was an application last year before CPC as well. And so I don't know if the building commissioner was included this year or last year. So I don't know. Vicki, can you hear us okay?
All right, yes. So Julie, last year, the building department buzzed at this question, and it sort of, I don't know how to really answer it because it sort of went round and round in whether or not it would be approved, but it all, like any building project, it all depends on what those spec specifications are. So because it never was a full project last year with a full quote, which we didn't have last year, I guess the big answer is no, it was not brought to the building committee department this year. However, we didn't get a quote, Julie, as you know, until our final application. So I'm not really answering your question, but I think the issue is the building department last year wasn't given the specifications. They couldn't really, they didn't, to my knowledge, understanding, didn't say either way because they needed to see the specifications before making a determination. Does that make sense?
It does. What I'm looking for clearly is making sure that, in fact, it does meet the building department specs before funding goes out.
Exactly. And the quote was received at our final, our final meeting. So, but certainly, the Hingham Housing Authority, the Quincy Housing Authority on their behalf, and we know him well, I can certainly reach out to Rick and make sure that those specifications, now that they have them, can be sent to the building department so that we have that information before this gets to town meeting, if that helps.
Great. Thank you. Dropping now to item number eight, which is the pickleball courts. We're spending money, we're not going to have pickleball courts as a result of this immediately? This is a study, is that?
It's a study because an optimal location needs to be determined in town, and I just don't think that's obvious to anyone right now. So we're asking a real consultant to look into it. So we're asking a real consultant to look into it who has experience in the area of this area.
I'm sure you've heard, I know I've heard from a number of residents that there's a real demand for this. So the sooner we can move on it, the better. Great. Item number nine, you may have said this, and I may have missed it. How far back do these records go?
For the newspapers?
Yeah, I mean, are we talking?
I think it's going back. I mean, the request is to go back and digitize everything that we have. So I believe it's 18.
I was looking for a sense of what we're talking about.
Yeah. No, I think it's to go back to.
Oh, 18, okay.
Oh, yeah, 1827.
Wow, that's great, thank you. Number 10, which was the $93,000. Is that subject to any competitive bid process?
Yep, so there were two bids on this project. And this was actually the average between the two bids. And so that's how Andrew Young came to that request amount.
And last question on the last item, number 11. Who owns that building?
Hingham Girl Scouts.
They own it?
Yes.
Fantastic job, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll turn it over to George and let George run through his committee with questions.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julie. Great presentation.
Let me ask my colleagues. Are there any questions from anyone in the room? Jason?
And it's more just background question for me. You know, so we have this budget to spend. Obviously, we're not spending the whole thing this particular year. Do the funds roll into some form of, I guess, fund or trust on the side that then become part of next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay. But you're saying typically that we're usually spending everything we have from a budget perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, usually their requests far exceed the budget that we have. And it's just the way it went this year. And, you know, as I said, we started out with 19 applications that were requesting over $2 million worth of money. But there were a number of applications that, even with large dollar amounts, that just didn't satisfy, they weren't ready, or they just were not eligible under the Community Preservation Act of what you can spend CPA funds on.
Thank you for that. So my question then really is, under the Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund, knowing that they have a need to do five, this is basically to do two, is there some, how did we arrive at 735 and not just say 770, which is the difference in the budget?
The suggestion was to split it in half and put half in reserve and half towards the Affordable Housing Trust. And we needed, well, we didn't have to be unanimous in our vote. I told the committee going into it, you know, it's nice to have unanimous vote. But if anyone disagrees and they want to vote for a different dollar amount, they can do that. But people wanted to come to a consensus, and the idea was to split the amount. There are some people who wanted to just give it all to Affordable Housing Trust, and I totally see that. But that's, you know, next year, there could be a huge crop of applications that, again, will be back to the same old where we just don't have enough money. And wouldn't it be nice even to have that $35,000 that we held over to put towards next year's budget? I think it was just sort of anticipating, oh, gosh, what are we going to get next year? So that was the thinking behind it.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
Additional questions? Julie, let me just follow up on Jason's question. So is, so the Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Authority has a goal of five units per year, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And is the 735 enough for them to get five units?
I don't have this to display, but this is the 18-month plan. There's an 18-month plan the Affordable Housing Trust has. And you can see dollar amounts going up and then going down. But on the bottom part here, all the projects that are already in play right now. So there are already projects that, one is renovation on a property on Central Street. Another is to sell a property on Road Circle. That would happen sometime during this first or second quarter of 2023. Then in the middle of the year, they would renovate a property on Ridgewood Crossing. And they would purchase another parcel. It says the potential for purchasing a parcel behind the, they're hoped to be in discussions with the folks who bought the old Ship Parish House. There's a backlot. And they're hopeful that they could put some money towards buying the back piece of that parcel. And so there's a, and I can share when we meet next week this slide where, you know, then they'll sell Central Street. So it's units coming and going. So it's, it looks like, not a lot right now, but it's putting it towards the ongoing 18-month process that they've laid out.
So this is not their only?
Correct. Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's an opportunity fund. And so it's money to go into their fund that they have already funds in there. So thank you, Dabbling, for explaining it better. So that they can jump on any opportunities that come up. And also spend that money to renovate properties that they have purchased. And then they turn it around and they sell it.
Okay, all right. So this amount of money then is consistent with their goal, their long-term goal of?
Yes, and they requested 700. And their initial application was lower than that. And then they came back and said, you know what? We looked at our numbers. We really need more. We need a higher number. We need 700. And we're giving them a little bit more than that.
Thank you, okay. We have a couple of AdCom members online. If anybody has a question, could you raise your hand and we'll recognize you? Okay, I guess I don't see any hands raised, so.
I was going to say, it would be very impressive if Nancy's able to ask a question over Zoom.
Nancy's everywhere.
It would be amazing.
Nancy can see anything.
Nancy can't see the front of the room.
All right, if no members participating remotely have any questions, let me just turn to the public to see if anybody from the public has any questions or comments. Liza, come on up, come up to the podium.
I suppose.
Just if you don't mind again, just state your name and address for the record.
All right, let me just move my stuff, sorry. Hi, Liza O'Reilly, 19 Porters Cove Road. I am a member of the Master Plan Committee. We still exist. And so I appreciate Julie mentioning that the Affordable Housing Trust is part of the Master Plan. I participated in these CPC hearings because of the pickleball courts, which I'm not going to advocate on this. But I would like to share with all of you that when I was listening to the conversation of the committee, which was very well organized by Julie, I applaud her role this year, it struck to me with all of the facilities that were repairing under these CPC funds that it reminded me of Chapter Eight in the Master Plan about facilities. And there, one of the policy recommendations is to provide facilities that support older adults, which the pickleball courts do and the Affordable Housing Parts do. But the Master Plan also states that, well, we should be also using the June 2020 Townwide Facilities Study that was approved at town meeting, which I don't believe we have yet, that would be very helpful to this committee going forward when addressing what facilities and historic buildings need to be repaired. There was extensive conversation about the tree and park barn, and even the comment of let it go. If we had the plans outlined in the Master Plan about maintaining our facilities, it would certainly help this committee and everyone else in town. So I encourage all of you, both boards, to ensure that those facilities efforts and those goals get enacted and implemented and that, because that will help this committee going forward as well when more requests come forward. I also highly encourage all of you to read the Master Plan and be cognizant of all the recommendations and use those guiding you moving forward with all of your work. Because every year, things will come up. And we should all be using this as a guideline of where we're going forward. But to me, these projects meet the goals of the Master Plan, which I'm very excited about. But I think there's more we can do of supporting the town by putting it all together. Thank you very much.
Liza, thank you. Anybody else in the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, I'm not seeing any. So the Select Board has a potential vote on this article tonight. Are you prepared to vote? Joe, do you want to wait a week?
I'm prepared to vote.
All right, Liz?
I am too.
Okay. With that, then, I would take a motion from the Select Board.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article N.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm in, as well. The motion carries unanimously. George, you have any, you're not voting on this tonight, are you?
We're not.
We'll have some further discussions then.
Excellent. Do you have anything else you need to discuss? You want to adjourn?
We are going to go into recess and reconvene upstairs. So, thank you.
Well, with that, then, the Select Board, we will adjourn for this evening. And I would take a motion to adjourn.